Okay, at six thirty, so I will go ahead and call the December regular board meeting to order. Taking roll call, please note that Director Xander is absent for now, but hopefully he'll be joining us soon. And all our other board members are present in person. Do I have a volunteer to read the mission and vision statements?
You can do that.
Thanks, Ron.
At Decor Community School District, we embrace student learning and well-being as our fundamental purpose. We will, in partnership with our students, families and community, make the world a better place. The mission of the Decor Community School District is learning, thriving, creating a legacy. The vision of the Decor Community School District is Decor Community School District will be a collaborative, innovative, learning-centered organization, empowering students to embrace their personal strengths and create their future.
Thank you. And we have one item of old business, which is delivering the oath of office to our newest board member, Brad Darling. Welcome, Brad.
Thank you.
Brad, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Director in Decorah Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you.
Yay. She gives a round of applause. Welcome, Brad, and we are so thankful that you are willing to serve.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Be a learning curve, but we'll jump right in.
Yeah, do you want to give a quick introduction?
Brad Darling, Northern Winnessia County resident my whole life, I guess. I farm and along with Tricia, we operate a bar and grill in the borough. We have four children, a senior, a junior, a freshman and an eighth grader, so. Just had a lot of fun during football season and now we're rolling into wrestling season, so.
Great, well, you're busy. Thanks for sharing your time in this way. Okay, next I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. I'll second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, first, the first item of business, or the next item of business, is the approval of consent items. And I wanted to mention that items number twenty and one ten concern Director Fadness and Xander, so I'd ask that you abstain. Or we consider making a motion, when we make a motion to, if, when the motion is made to approve these, if we could vote separately with items number twenty and one ten as being separate. If that makes sense. Yeah, so take a minute to look through the consent items.
So as a clarification, you could make, Ron can make a motion to approve the agenda, Sands, the one item that impacts him, which is item twenty. But could include Aaron, so then we could vote on that. And then somebody could make a motion to approve item twenty and Ron would just abstain from that part based on Ron being here right now.
Just a clarification on the personnel, the high school teacher that is at the end of the school year, that resignation?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that seems, that's a little earlier than normal, but we appreciate staff letting us know their plans, so we can make arrangements.
Absolutely.
So very appreciative of that.
I'll make a motion to approve everything except activities on the number twenty.
And I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then I will make a motion.
Accept twenty. Thank you.
And I will make a motion to.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we just did the twenty.
We did not.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to approve activity fund number twenty.
I will second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And Director Fadness abstained. We did it. Okay. Next is time for open forum and communication from the public. If they all familiar faces. So I will continue on. Tonight, we have a presentation by Mr. Albers from the Decorah, about Decorah Middle School Literacy.
Hey, thank you for having me here tonight. Normally, historically, I've usually had some staff members share just some things going on directly with students and that's been kind of a nice change for us as we've had presentations here in the past. This one tonight really impacts all of our students and so I am, you're kind of stuck with me tonight and so other staff members. But you'll see that our kind of focus here tonight is looking at our two building goals for the year, and obviously these are simplified version of what we're trying to do. But focus on content literacy and then develop a passion for reading. As a board, I hope you see the commitment to reading. Obviously, that is incredibly important as we think K through twelve and and the work we do with our students for literacy, just overall reading. We're not going to focus much on the content literacy. Just a highlight is that really what we're promoting in our building is that all teachers are reading teachers. Science teacher, the social studies teacher, obviously are as much reading teachers as the reading teacher themselves. Those teachers that teach language arts as we go to try to promote literacy throughout the day. And realizing we all have a kind of a joint effort to help improve our reading scores as we think about the district as a whole and our building as a whole. The focus for today, though, however, would be talking about developing a passion for reading. As we've seen recently and for those that maybe have middle school students, free reading maybe drops off as students start to become teenagers into their teenage years of potential in high school. Obviously, we have some students who are just avid readers, they'll read anytime, anywhere. But we've noticed the last few years that having students, you know, wanting to book an independent reading book has dropped off. And so last year, our five through eight ELA PLC, along with Shannon Horton, who's our five through twelve teacher librarian, during their PLC work talked about really how can we help develop a passion for our students, our teenagers, our middle schoolers to read more efficiently, more wanting to on their own, things of that nature. And so again, tonight's focus will be just that, developing a passion for reading, how it came to be and kind of what we're doing to promote that here at the middle school. Again, a short summary, though, as we talked about it simply, what do we provide an opportunity for students to free read more regularly within the school day? And again, like we talked about, you've seen that a few times now, develop passion for reading. Thinking about, you know, our score, scores as a whole, the middle school's always fair nicely with our ISAF scores and our math testing scores and our reading literacy scores. But good can be the enemy of great, right? And so I think that's where we're at right now, is we're trying to put this emphasis on the literacy at the middle school, again, within our content area specifically, and then just helping our students become more avid readers and those who want to enjoy reading on their own. So the why, again, this was developed from our ELA PLC and Shannon Horton and our, those who are really more kind of involved with literacy aspect at the middle school. Reading like exercise helps students and adults live healthier, happier lives, while researching academic mental health benefits that are, that are included. Every student enters our school at a different point in their literacy journey, the confidence, their experience, their interest, ability, et cetera. I think that's really an important part. We deal with all students, all ranges of students who enjoy reading, who don't enjoy reading. So our, our goal and our job is to help support those students in their journey. For some, it's the more advanced, you know, they are reading regularly, for others who aren't, aren't reading as, as often. So how do we help them be successful kind of in this endeavor? Too many students do not read willingly, consistently, joyfully or proficiently. And then today, students and adults included are increasingly distracted, constantly scrolling and skimming and struggling to focus or sustain structure. So we think about what technology brings, you know, to us, a lot of fantastic opportunities, right? And I don't think anybody here, as we talk about technology, can downplay the, the benefits. But at the same time, you can have some drawbacks as, as we think about some of that work that we try to do in schools, reading, independent reading being one of them. And then just kind of the overall part of the why is every school must make literacy a priority. As we talk about the focus, of course, our elementary teachers do a fantastic job promoting some of the foundational skills that go into reading. And really, our job at middle school and beyond to the high school is to help really continue that work, right? And I think that's really what we're talking about here, is trying to help foster that, that a skill set as we work with our kids. So how are we going about this? Well, really in short, if you've ever heard the acronym D E R, drop everything and read, that's really essentially what we're doing, right? What we've noticed, and Mrs. Sam may be able to test this a little bit here, being in the middle school, we're taking the first ten minutes of all of our study hall and win times. And win is, is an acronym for what I need, and this fifth and sixth graders use. I'm not going to call it the study hall, but it's a little more intentional time to get some of their extra work done or work with students that may need assistance in various areas. And so what we're really doing is taking that first ten minutes of each study hall and win time across the board for all of our staff and students to read. Kind of a drop everything and read situation. You know, we do have work for our kids to work on, of course, in the study halls, but you know, forty-four minutes where some have twice a day, five days a week potentially. That's a lot of time to get work done, and so it becomes some down, you know, not downtime, but time for them that they could be doing other things. And so what we were able to do is, you know, as we started this last year, and this was developed from our, our staff, is to basically keep that ten minutes, the first ten minutes every day of winning study hall designed specifically for reading. And the goal is for enjoyment, right? It's not supposed to be a punishment in any shape or form, but the goal is to promote some enjoyment as we read. They also, the, the goal also is for the adults to model reading during this time. You know, when, when you walk into these rooms, you're going to see the teachers in pairs reading with the kids. When I've been able to get into study halls, I'm reading with them as well. So just trying to model that, what it looks like for all of us to become lifelong learners and kind of readers in that, in that realm. Books and magazines are available for students to finish. We've done a good job. Our staff is to make sure we have a variety of options for students. Obviously, our library, of course, is available, but even within that room, we're trying to promote just literature that exists there. So magazines might be available, additional books might be available, of course, we hope they have their free reading book along all the time. But if they don't, we'll have opportunities for them to grab something, grab something without having to go back to the locker. And as you can see here, no library locker trips during this time. Again, our, our goal is that this is ten minutes, we're going to be consistent. Everyone in the building or everyone during a study hall at that time is completing it. And so it kind of works to, you know, get everybody on the same page. The additional goals throughout, we talked, you know, we work to encourage and a growth, we, we work to encourage and grow a positive relationship with reading. Again, that's the overall goal, right? Promote reading for its enjoyment. We let the students choose the book choice, what they're reading, et cetera. That's not our time to really go through that. Our time is to let them read. And then what we're supposed to do as well is the adults, of course, and take interest in what they're reading, right? Talk about what they're reading. You know, we can share what we're reading with them, they can share with us, we can have those conversations. And what's been cool to see as we go through some of the day, I'll go around the study halls at different times and we, we see students have these conversations with the adults and vice versa, which is really cool. And the idea is that we're trying to make sure this is contagious, right? If we can promote enthusiasm, if our teachers are, are consistent with it, everyone's doing the same thing, it's going to promote that enthusiasm as we move on with the day. Additional steps we're taking. We, we've done book clubs, some of your, your kids maybe have been through, have done the reading games in the past. You know, in the past, if students didn't get their work done, it might be, well, just go grab your device and you could work on X, Y and Z. We're trying to curtail that a little, we're trying to put that to the side. If you're done with your work, it's go grab your free, get your reading while you wait for others to finish. Or if we have ten extra minutes and you're done with a quiz or a test, it's get your free reading book. Little things like that, we're trying to, trying to adjust in our, you know, as we facilitate through the day to help promote reading. Author credits, of course, book displays in all rooms. We actually took this past fall during in-service, we had our reading teachers talk about how they display books. What do they do to promote books, right? And, you know, we joked, we joked with Mr. Fromm and I, and I think he'd be okay with this, but, you know, how do we make the books in his room look as, you know, as, as kind of beautiful and, and, you know, engaged as the books in Mr. Hogan's room? Right? And so the little things, how you promote books, right? And so we bought some book stands, we made sure people had counter space and to, you know, set them up properly. Make sure you might have an old book from the past, right? It's a, it's a great classic, but it's old and raggedy and ripped. Well, we get new books that have the cover that kind of pops a little more, right? Just little things like that that we try to work on. So book displays in all rooms, again, science rooms, social studies rooms, math rooms, just those little things that we can do to help promote it and encourage kids to want to, you know, grab the books or seek out those books. And then just kind of continuing on what we talked about a little bit, promoting content literacy in all classes, right? Every teacher's a reading teacher, social studies, math, you know, M P E, right? Music, they all teach reading differently, but they're all reading teachers, which is important for us to, to navigate as we think about our work here at the middle school. So what is the data tell us, right? Well, since this time last year, the library circulation is up two thousand books checked out. The same time last year, so we talked about, you know what, how, how has this made a difference? Well, there's one number right there, right? Over two thousand books more have been checked out this year compared to last year at the same time. So we heard that number, we were kind of almost taken back by it, you know, we knew it would be up, but that was a pretty significant, significant number and we're excited to see how that kind of goes as the year goes on. Our ELA PLC has done some surveys with our students kind of at the beginning of the year now. And really, one of the simple questions they asked is, do you feel you've read more this year than you had at this time last year? Eighty-five percent said yes, and we actually think it might be a little higher. Some kids told us they didn't quite understand what we're asking right away, and so it could even be closer to ninety percent. But that's again, a pretty significant number, right? But what do the kids tell us? Well, here we go. So these are student testimonials that our teachers are able to grab. I won't go ahead and read all of them, but you can just take a look there and see what the kids are telling us, which I think is really, really the, the telling impact, right, the telling data point that we can use. And I think reading for the first ten minutes of study hall is great, gives, gives time for students and teachers to read the books without interruption. It's also a decent amount of time because even though it's long, you still have around thirty minutes of your homework, which I think is kind of where we're at, right? You still get the best of both worlds, right? Commit it to the free reading, there's still time to get your work done. You know, one other component that, I don't know if I put one of the examples up here, but just that mental health component, right? And this was kind of really was part of the big focus on, I didn't touch on earlier, as our teachers talked about this, just the, the mental health benefits that this has, right, that our kids recognize, you know, just ten minutes to just be able to somewhat relax in your book really gets you a good start for that next period, right? And try to be mindful of different things that are going on. Our teachers try to promote some of that mindfulness that happens anyway, right? So this is just one way, as we walk from our kids into our room, to have that consistent thing we're doing, right? And all kids know it, they know what to expect, you know, they know to have their book. And, you know, we think about even our eighth graders, right? You might on the higher end of the, the middle school as far as, you know, how are they responding to it and they're very supportive of it still. And so we just want to continue that. So this is what the students are telling us. What about the parents? Again, I won't go through all of this, but there are some points from our parents as well. I think the top one there, just the first few weeks of school, my eighth grade daughter showed more enthusiasm for reading than she had in the last few years. Both my sixth grade and eighth grade daughters eagerly summarize her books to me from the moment we got in the car until we reached home. It's a wonderful blessing to witness them rediscovering their love for reading, reconnecting with genres that our family likes discussing. And just another, again, impact of this, right? Promoting reading within our world with a carryover at home, as we talk about, you know, families maybe having these discussions at the dinner table about what's going on. And so at the end of the day, you know, we shared this with our staff at the beginning and why this is so valuable, right? The, the value of why reading, just twenty minutes, twenty minutes at home as an example. But for us, it's just that ten minutes, potentially five to seven times a week, right? So fifty to seventy minutes, we're going to allow for free reading at the middle school, maybe at a minimum. Right? And it's really not so much about, you know, the standardized test scores, right? This shows and it kind of prepares the idea of like reading twenty minutes a day, ninety percentile versus five minutes a day, the fifty percentile versus one minute. I think the point for us, though, is looking at the bottom. Right? How do we become better readers? We read. And that's really a simple solution for us as we continue, right, to go from good to great, right? Our scores have, have, we've had some great scores here in the past, some good scores in the past, but like I said, good is the enemy of great. And so what's the next step for us to take as well to promote reading and this is just one start for us, so. Questions, you know, I went through that so much fast.
Bravo to you and your team. That is, that, that's really incredible. And to, you didn't say this specifically, but you're encouraging non-digital reading, is that right?
Yes.
So you, like, books, magazines, things different.
Yep, yeah, and, and that was a big focal part. Like I said, this is all staff driven too, right? This, this is from our ELA, Shannon Horton, I mean, we have a fantastic staff. Shannon Horton is a teacher librarian, five through twelve, I know. Beth Wahlberg helps out in the media library to, to help kids find books and to find their best fit book, as we call it here in the middle school. That's not always easy with middle schoolers and, and they do a wonderful job of finding those books and also making sure that if they don't have them, they can, they can get the books that, that kids want to read. And so, yeah, promoting the doctrine, tradition, like you said, magazines, I know my Amoson has a lot of the field and stream magazines in his, you know, in his room, right? For kids who like hunting and fishing, right? I mean, that's, that's reading, right? That's, that's literacy. And so those little things we're trying to do and again, try to drum up that, that excitement, so it's been good. We've had some great, great feedback. Our staff has bought in, you know, that's, that's the important part, right? You know, study hall, it's a time to help kids, but it's also sometimes the, you know, you want to check the email quick, what's going on? Because it's been a busy day, you haven't had that chance and our staff is really committed to that ten minutes and it sometimes, you know, creeps into twelve to fifteen, but our students are, are also rising to the occasion. So it's been, it's been a good start for us this way. We want to keep building off it. You know, I, you know, what will happen with our test scores, I don't know, but at the end of the day, we're going to hopefully promote some lifelong reading and that's really the most important part, so.
Yeah, modeling is so important and hopefully it inspires some families to have some shared reading time at home too.
It's amazing what a simple practice like that, what an impact it can have.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the key is the, to everyone being on board and the support. And just to add on to what you said about Shannon and Beth Wahlberg, I mean, they, they are amazing. They know every kid in the school, they know what they want to read. They, when they order books, they have stu, certain students in mind. They really are incredible resource for the school too.
It's a big puzzle that they somehow are able to fit the pieces on every time, so. They do a really good job and they're, they do a good job of then coming to the staff with that to, to promote things that they're trying to accomplish. And so it's just a good relationship that we have going with our, our biggest, you know, our teacher librarian, Mrs. Horton, so it's been good for us.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda is new business. First is approval of modified supplemental amount, the MSA, we're at risk and drop-off prevention program.
And so this is something we do every year. And this funds, well, drop-off prevention. And so we can put this towards staff salaries. A, a lot of it goes towards staff salaries and helps us with our general fund budget. But the formula, the, the fun part of the formula is we're allowed to collect five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for MSA. And there's a portion of that that we have to do a match on, so you'll see our match is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-one. Our multiplier, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, is, is going back to how much we can collect on line three, we're five percent, but other districts are less than that and that creates a little bit of inequity, so. But we're happy with being able to collect that. Other than that, what I say our local match is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand and the state pays for the rest. So this is always something, I think, when we look at our budgets, it's always you want count, we want row four of the carryover from last year to be zero. So Kathy gets the kudos for making sure that we spent all our modified supplemental amount, because if we don't, then the state says, oh, you didn't need a hundred thousand dollars, we'll fund you a hundred thousand dollars less. And that's And that's just bad business. So. But other than that, questions about that?
When you say staff, you mean to, uh, teachers who specifically are working with students?
Uh, counselors. Uh, we, we can do a lot of counselors, uh, and that's changed over the years, just, you know, since I first started, uh, uh, being a superintendent, I know there was a little bit of a game where we would say, well, we want to code as much of our school counselor as we can to, to drop off prevention. And then we would get an email back that said, you can't, you've coded seventy-five percent, that's too much in the value. Well, that went away a couple of years ago because they give more local control where you just have to have a plan in place to, to spend it. But off the top of my head, Kathy, the, the counselors. What's that?
Twenty twenty program.
Okay.
High school, on the Viking Ademics Center.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one, one at the middle school, maybe some of the wing time. When in the meantime, um, we have a couple, um, drop-off preventions, uh, Mrs. Knight moved into that position and carry a lead.
So a lot of, a lot of staff, it looks different.
Yes.
So thank you for so carefully managing this resource for us.
We approved the modified supplemental amount for the at-risk and drop-off prevention program as stated on this document.
Second.
Okay. Hearing a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Next, um, for approval of a bus bid for a seventy-seven passenger in an eighty-four passenger bus.
And, uh, so these were on our, uh, summer projects from this past summer. And so we got the, the bids out with the specs. Um, the district does a really nice job of keeping the fleet vibrant and, you know, usually about ten years old. Um, so you see us, we are trading, trading in at two thousand and eleven. So that's, uh, closer to the older part, but I'll let Chris talk a little bit about that. Uh, the bus bids, uh, the Bluebirds came in uh, for school bus sales out of Waterloo, which I worked with the past and we like working with here in Decora. They're the, the lowest bids. And then we've got, we're trading, trading in some buses, uh, we're trading in some buses that maybe don't have as many, any miles, but they're just kind of are not performing as well buses.
Yeah. So they'd be costing us more money the longer.
Uh, and so when you say get two thousand dollars for a trade-in bus, that doesn't seem like much. And that's just kind of how that works. So you really just knock a little bit off, uh, for trading in a bus. Uh, we did go back and, cause I had, these are diesel buses. And so I talked to the board and said, I think we're getting ready to do propane. So we did get an alternate on propane. What shocked me was that the seventy-seven passenger propane bus was quoted at a hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. While the seventy-seven passenger diesel was a hundred and forty-one, seven fifty-nine. So it's only a little over seven thousand dollars more. And that percentage used to be higher.
Yep, it was.
Uh.
Can Chris talk about the differences between diesel and propane and what would, might be an advantage of a propane bus?
Uh, fuel economy would be one of the leading points on it. So on overall, they use, I'd say fifty percent more uh, propane than like the diesel would use as fuel quantity. But when you look at the price difference, they actually save us money in that aspect. The other part would be maintenance. So you go back to a regular combustion engine as opposed to a diesel engine, which the oil quantity is less than half of it. Um, the maintenance is just as frequent, but the upkeep on it is significantly less. So that's one of the big things. The other huge point is you don't have to plug them in at night. You can as an option, but normally you don't have to plug them in. So we actually have a pretty substantial electric bill, which we're going to try to start pulling data off of. If we head that direction, that we've got a base model saying this bus uses no electricity, these bus use this much. Um, this would kind of be the direction we would swing, but if we did one, it would be our beta test, our, our, our pioneer test, that we would have some solid data to go off of. And I can tell you guys, well, this is how much maintenance costs us. This is how much fuel costs us. And I know the big hurdle would be the infrastructure part of it. Um, I did talk to a couple of different local vendors. We can get onsite fueling as we go through this process. Instead of just pulling the trigger and saying, we're going to put LP tanks out, we're going to start fueling here. We can slowly bridge that gap. And let's say that this didn't work out, um, I've been working with school bus sales. We could always trade it back if this is the direction we didn't want to go. So we're not committing to a decision that we can't back off of. This is a direction I think most of the school district around here are starting to go to. And their numbers seem pretty solid and they seem pretty happy about it. Uh, there is some additional training. I mean, when I was at international, I got certified on the propane side, but that was older. Different aspect, different engine. Uh, things have changed quite a bit now. There would be some additional training. We might have to update some of our software for diagnostics, but again, we go keep it all in-house. Um, and that'd be one of the bigger aspects here.
So the propane, you don't have to plug in the propane?
No.
Right. Yeah.
Doesn't gel.
It doesn't gel. So then we, then you don't have to idle them as much either. Is that part of the?
It's kind of a win-win. I mean, no matter what direction you really look at it. I mean, there's a lot of data I can just go over with you guys off the top of my head, but it, it's overall, it's, it's a win-win direction. Uh, that's why I think if we did decide to bridge this gap and go that direction, going greener and using LP, I think having one that we can actually pull data off and I can come to you guys and I can show you like this is, this is the numbers we have. And honestly, the first one we did, I would probably put it on, considering the fact that local vendors will come to fuel it for us. I would put it on one of our longer roads and I would just see, this is, this is the benefit we can get running it.
Well, and I'm thinking about, like, we've all walked by the line of idling buses on our way into basketball games, wrestling meets band concerts, but think about all-day things like wrestling tournaments, if it's an all-day tournament or a speech competition, um.
Yeah, those guys will take a court with them and they're in a parking spot. They're out there every couple of hours, starting the bus up or letting it idle for an hour, shutting it off, going back out. I mean, it seems a little bit of a hindrance, but if you, if you tally that up with the number of buses we spend out on sports or idling in the morning when I let them sit here. When I go start buses up, I start pretty much all the buses up. Some will sit for five minutes, some will sit for thirty minutes. Um.
Yeah.
So it, all those numbers add up quick.
I'll, I'll just jump in. As we transitioned in Central City, we did not successfully transition Dr. Ten, and there were some hangups with drivers. So that's why it's always good to start slow. Um, drivers in Central City love the fact, the power they got out of the diesel bus was, was, we would have more going up the hill. Thirteen out of Central City, they would say, gosh, if we're driving a diesel, we have to floor it and we maybe get up to fifty-five. But a propane performs more like a car. So it went up the hill a lot faster, which, which the Dunkerton drivers thought it would perform more like a gasoline bus, which also is poor get up and go. Uh, they love the fact that it was a Roush engine from Roush Racing. That was always the big selling point. Uh, uh, the, the warm-up is faster, like just the warming up inside of the bus, uh, was faster. Of course, the, the never gelling up was, was a big thing, but we went from, we went from kind of being on the fence and we said, told the drivers, we actually went down to Linmart to check it out. And they, Linmart had transitioned and they said the cost savings at that time, and this is probably almost ten years ago. You might, they thought it was going to take four years to, to get, earn the difference back between the overpay. And of course, the overpay was maybe fifteen thousand dollars that that the, the premium that you paid on overpay, the premium that you paid for propane was maybe about fifteen thousand dollars. And they thought, then they would make that back in four years. And I remember they were saying, gosh, we're looking at our numbers. We think we're going to make that back up in two and a half. Because they had not factored in what Chris talked about, what the oil changes, uh, are, are dramatically different. So.
And it looks like that gap is really substantially.
Yeah. I, I was floored when I saw that, because I just, I expected if, if you're paying a hundred and forty-one thousand for a bus, I kind of expected the propane to be about a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and sixty. So, um, and when Chris says, we like, just to point out, we don't even have to invest in the infrastructure. We've got a local vendor who will come out and just fill our bus up off the, the, their tank. So drive here and fill it up. And so we could do that, uh, a couple of times a week until we can get started. If we know it's a direction we want to go, then we work on building up the infrastructure. Um, I can say, uh, about a hundred gallon tank, you can use eighty gallons out of that. And we use, uh, uh, when we're calculating for trips, we would say, okay, we better calculate four miles to gallon. We think we can get five, but we better do four. We don't want, the drivers of course didn't want to run out because you can't just go knock on the farmhouse door and borrow a gallon of propane as easily. Um.
Would this be something then that we would be able to use a bus to go to other schools, to its, to sporting events, et cetera, or?
So there is a website that has all the propane, uh, filling stations in Iowa, and they're usually at, uh, like a uh, Circle K, uh, truck stops, if I've got that right. Um, so there, there is the less of propane filling. I assume there are more. Linmart had a story where Pleasant Valley was coming over and their driver was so anxious, even though they had calculated that he could get there and back. They called ahead and, and just said, the driver's really anxious. Could he come fill up off the school tank and we'll pay for it? So there are infrastructures like that. And I think with our relationships with school districts that, that if you were going somewhere where there wasn't a tank, that we could probably make arrangements for that, you know, and if we don't, we just wouldn't send a bus. But, but obviously if you drive to Des Moines, uh, you're going to have to stop and get propane, but there aren't places to fill up for propane. So.
I think doing our route, I mean, keeping it like on a, on a regular route is, is going to give us our, our best data. And we've got sports buses and I drive a road to them, so the mileage goes out equally. We've got sports buses. You don't want to go to Des Moines and want to go to Wakan. If we keep one on a constant route, I mean, honestly, some of our routes are forty-eight, forty-nine miles. I mean, that's where our biggest mileage buildup is. So we could get some, I mean, really good data, especially if I put it on one of my longest routes going up towards Hesper or, or, you know, go up to the Baroque area. And then we can kind of see like, I'm much money, we're saving on fuel by itself. And just to touch on what Tim talked about with the driver hangup, I really, I was, that was one of my biggest worries was as soon as I brought it up, the drivers were like, no, 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 no. Not going to do it. Change is bad. I kind of jumped the gun and I had John bring one. I, I know.
Yeah.
We went for a test drive and you, you, I think every one of those drivers that was in that bus or drove that bus hands down, loved it. And I selectively intentionally picked those drivers, but they don't listen to this.
No, it's, no, nobody hears this. Never puts that kind of stuff in the paper.
Those guys were the ones that were going to make the biggest hubbub and be the biggest problem, but talk to the other drivers like, oh, you wouldn't believe the power. Cause we went up, I think we went up Drake Hill, we went up a couple of other hills and, yeah, they were just amazed by it.
Did you get to go on the bus ride?
Yeah.
In showers.
It was.
Oh, I'm sure.
It was, it was kind of a spiritual thing.
Yeah. Came out that the thing that was most striking is everybody that started, even after hearing the other drivers say, wow, this really got power, were like, oh my gosh, this thing is good. I mean, when we took off out of the parking lot, I swear we were spinning wheels and, uh,
Yeah, they, 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 they.
Yeah, it was like, wow, this, this thing really moves, you know? Not like it's got a high, it's going to go a hundred miles an hour, but the get up and go is substantially better than, um, the diesels.
It sounds like there isn't really a downside to trying this from what I'm hearing.
I haven't seen one yet.
Well, several districts in our area have been doing this for quite some time.
Successfully.
Yeah.
Well, I'm excited that you are eager and have a plan to track data and really collect information to show the impact. I think that's important. Um, yeah, I can't think of any disadvantages that we well, should consider or talk about. And this, the proposed investment in new buses is, you know, we have a schedule of replacing, can you tell us a little bit about that, Chris? About our inventory management and?
Well, things have changed dramatically in the last year. Um, I ca- I try to rotate the ones that, um, give them more mileage. I want to put the newer buses on the higher mileage route. That way we're under warranty if something happens. Um, more of an even-paced mileage kind of schedule. So I know the ones right now that we're trading in, they do have lower mileage, but these are the buses that are going to cause us more problems. Um, one of the buses down there right now is, I think, seventy-four thousand miles. Where we would eventually in the next year, it was a route bus that pulled it off because we're having some engine issues, whether along with transmission issues. We'd be looking at doing an engine swing, which is all doable. We could do this year. It's just the investment on it, what it's going to cost to keep that bus engine-wise running. And then you start looking at body-wise, because of the age of the bus with rust and state inspections, we have to follow certain criteria. So we're looking at replacing body panels, exhaust, you know, like just the emissions and that's a whole generation emission system, which is outdated. So now we can't just buy replacement parts. It's aftermarket and they really gouge us on that. So the overall investment, what we've been looking at, we would end up putting that money of what a new bus would cost in the next three or four years, just into keeping one that's updated. And I mean, the emissions are bad. So that's both of those that are on there right now. So we're trying to fine-tune it. So we average, I don't want to, I don't want to trade in a bus with under a hundred thousand miles on it. Right now I've got a bus that's got a hundred and thirty-nine thousand miles on it, but it's in better condition than the ones that we're trading in right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want, it, it'd be unnecessary spending to me if we put that money into a, a bus that's honestly downhill. Plus we also have, I, I don't know if Tim mentioned this or if it's in the packet, we have an abundance of buses. Really, we eliminated two routes this year. Prior to that, we had more than several spares. Um, the running theme is right now, even on inspection, we, last year inspection, we had one go out of service, which isn't a big deal. We've got a spare for it. The, the most I try to keep in the shop is a down basis as out of service while I'm working on them is three. So even if we have one out of service on an inspection, we still have, I mean, we have several other ones. If we can take that number down, like that's why I wanted to do a double trade-in this year.
Right.
We can eliminate four buses. It's an inspection fee, it's tax fee, it's, it's insurance fees that we could drop down, plus the space out there that we, we could utilize for other, other aspects.
Yeah. Um. And if we, if we did approve a purchase tonight, the buses would not be delivered immediately. It would be like for next fall.
April.
Right? Oh, in the spring. Okay.
I talked to school bus sales, if we go that route, either one, one is further out than the other one, but, um, they actually got a pretty good rotation going through as far as their building and keeping things on demand. Um, what we did was basically a stock model, but the alterations could be made in, in Waterloo and that could be available to us in April or March.
Well, that's sooner than I thought. And I know that, um, you know, we've heard from community members that have shared grant opportunities for propane buses. So if I think, you know, this might be a nice time to make this investment, to try out a propane bus to see is the strip, the direction that we want to go? And then we can decide, you know, to move forward to pursue some of those grant funding opportunities.
Are we in need of a one-seventy-seven passenger and one-eighty-six passenger?
Currently right now, yeah. To keep our, kind of our, our rotation at its point. Last year we skipped entirely, um, kind of because of where we are right now. But this kind of gets us slowly back into the track next year. Probably be close to the same numbers again.
And do they only make propane in this seventy-seven passenger?
Uh, right now, yeah. And so international, they don't do propane anymore. They're waiting for coming to the commons to do a revised version of it. Um, Thomas does make a G M side of it, but we're having some issues getting all of the Thomas, um, bus sales right now. Um. I do got several emails out. I've got some dealers out through Freightliner to see who the contact person is. There's other districts that are having problems getting connected with, uh, doing the sales on that side, but I think the bids that we have right now is the direction we want to go.
And just to jump on, um, uh, back when you were talking about the rust, we, we do a nice job of cycling our buses. And if you get behind, what you can't do is not buy buses for ten, well, you can, because I came from one district and did it, but all of a sudden you've got eighteen-year-old buses and you want to replace five of them. And your budget doesn't allow that. So it's really good to stay on top of it. And the rust, when you, when you have eighteen-year-old buses and you need to use them every day and they come in and they say, and you've got thirty days to fix this rust, you're going to pay whatever it costs to fix the rust. And I was always just shocked of ten thousand dollars was nothing, fifteen thousand dollars. So you're like, gosh, we did that a couple of times. Uh, but again, because we let our buses get older, previous districts. So, so we have a nice job that we're staying on top of it. Um, first, our recommendation is if the board's comfortable, we certainly want to try the propane, the seventy-seven passenger propane. And then the eighty-four passenger, uh, diesel, and those are both would come from school bus sales.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to move forward with, uh, two buses. The one eighty-four passenger diesel and the seventy-seven passenger propane from modern bus sales.
I'll second that.
Okay. Hearing a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just the one thing that I would, for instance, like to thank Chris for the hard work and using the software to combine the routes.
Using the software to combine the routes that we have, um. Were able to get a lot more for our transportation dollar when we're being very efficient about. Planning that, so when you talk about reducing two routes, that's huge. And uh, thank you for picking the lead on that.
Right, and for being here tonight, because I know that you have very early mornings.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think the emissions side of it is what sways me towards propane, being about half as much on the emissions side of things, if you've ever sat behind a bus. Especially for an extended period of time. You know it, so.
Yeah, I almost feel hesitant to buy another diesel, I'm gonna hear all these good things about the. Um the propane, which is why I asked if the, if the propane comes in an eighty four passenger, but we are in need of an eighty four passenger, that is something that's really important right now.
So what I did to help eliminate the two routes is I started using uh two of our eighty four passengers in town. One is just for sunflower and middle lights, that way I can keep it contained to one bus goes here and here, which. I don't know if you guys know herb or that route, um that route is almost at max cap every day. And then the other one's the in-town route, that way we can just have one bus doing the in-town stops, but I pulled two transit buses to do that, which kind of gives me a juggling act this year. Um I had to pull a couple of route buses here and there when we had, um I think we had nine sports buses go up one night. So certain drivers are okay with driving a spare, I can put this over here and, and run one that needs mileage, but. It was a bit of a juggling act, and this would kind of fill in that void of using those transit buses on routes.
So what I'm hearing you say is that eighty, getting an eighty four passenger bus is important.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've had the motion in a second, so we'll call for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Excited to try a new propane bus, keep us posted, Chris. Okay, um. Um item C of donated books.
Uh so per our board policy and with the, with the change in the board policy, um this was kind of a new thing last year with the. Maybe a year and a half ago with the, with the uh books and library, and so these, these. Are mostly elementary books and uh vetted by our librarians and recommended that we uh accept these donated books. And put them into circulation.
I was chuckling about the three little aliens and the, and the big bad robot.
Yeah, yeah.
I definitely want to read.
There you go, there you go, so you know, uh we're not just trying to promote reading at the middle school with the students, we're trying to do it with our retired teachers who are also. Our great long-term subs for them. So anything they can do to keep you engaged, Carol?
All right, I appreciate that. I know that we approved the list of donated books. Or approved the books on donated books that are on the list.
Yeah, that works. I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Um the next item on the agenda is the first reading of six oh five point oh eight Artificial Intelligence in the Educational Environment. And six oh five oh eight R one Artificial Intelligence in the Educational Environment. Um. Several of us attended. The Iowa School Board Association Conference in November, and I went to an incredible session on artificial intelligence. And um. This. This um document was drafted by I A S B. And. We did not review it last year, but we're reviewing it now.
Yeah.
And yeah, what do you have to add?
I would just said, uh there's probably uh the corrections or changes we might make to this policy are, are. Going to be more along the lines of grammatical, uh because one of the people that looked at it pointed out a few things, but every time uh. Folks have gone to something AI and a couple of them are in the room, they come back and say, we really need to get that AI policy adopted, and so um. That this will be a first read, but I don't, I don't anticipate too many changes, uh the admin team is gonna meet this week and we'll talk a little bit about it. Um before we bring it back uh next month, January thirteenth, but because it's ISAB, we typically just adopt those verbatim, and like I said. We'll probably do some grammatical improvements.
Yeah, so a few things that I wanted to just name as a group is um. Informing. Or keeping our community of stakeholders informed, our students are gonna be using tools, um to be transparent about that. Also educating school staff about appropriate use of AI and to redact important information like. Names and other personal information, um so this is something that needs, we need to really look at every single word. And um I think that it's good to have a first reading as is from I A S B, but this is one that we need to. Be very thoughtful about. For appropriate use across our district and, and simply just to educate and have staff. Informed and give them space to ask questions, because this is new technology and it's really, I mean, I don't want to be negative. It's come on frighteningly fast, like compared to other technological advances in the last hundred years and. Um we want our students to be prepared to go to the next phase, yeah, whether that's direct employment or college. Experiences, we want them to be able to use these tools and function in the world. Anything to add, Sean?
Let's say. This is our building point for the district, and then. Um like Sherry Quandall and I already kind of started going through and working on developing plans on how to train teachers more than what they already know.
Yeah.
On, you know. Yeah, I have personal identifiable information, what that's used in AI, you know, and how maybe that's used in a. In the free versions of things and, and then they use that to solicit or sell that information to gain money.
Right.
There's, there's a lot of differences.
Yeah.
And I might ask, I know, do you have anything that you? You, you attend, you're one of the people that attended AI that came back and said.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um. I think it was our first kind of introduction to it and it was just. That why we need to get on top of this, um and so we've brought in some training already.
Mm hmm.
Starting last year. And I think, I can talk to this about this too, but there's um definitely been interest from parents to support the students. Um with their academic needs and how AI can um support that, and so it's fine line, right, on. What is an accommodation and what, you know, what's appropriate, how does that affect everybody else in the classroom, et cetera?
Yeah.
And right now, it's all students' computers have access, there's nothing blocked. That with AI on student.
They are, they're supposed to be blocked on most AI related things, unless we have a, a data privacy agreement built in with them, so like Google for one. Is something that we have an agreement with, that's a part of the Google suite, so their Gemini suite. Is accessible, um we, we try to let the, the students to tell them, have learned how to use the tool appropriately.
Mm hmm.
But yeah, like chat, G P T, that's a lot, because there's no data privacy with that, you, you go put stuff in there, it's sold to the older market.
Mm hmm.
And I think the question isn't whether AI is going to be in our schools, it's are we going to be aware of and on top of. The role that AI has in our schools, there's no stopping it, it's. Yeah. It's a.
Of its own.
The next phase of cybersecurity is AI, is, is combating AI, um which is super scary for tech people like you. We accept your meeting uh Friday, uh the holiday, Zoom, and that's all we've got to talk about.
Yeah. Mm hmm.
So this feels like Dr. Gray first, like foundation of, of the district, starting to figure out. AI as far as privacy goes, but then I assume that we'll move into policies within just the world. Over that this, I mean, well, for student use and staff use or?
That's a recommendation from the A A S, is kind of have a, a staff guide and then a student guide.
Mm hmm.
Um just to get that building block, because the staff's use of AI tools is gonna be different than the students' use of AI.
I will move that we approve as a first reading the draft. Policy. Which has been presented to us by I A S B.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And thanks to staff in the room that are further educating themselves. And hoping ahead to help implement new policies. Okay, next on the agenda is to review the process. For the elementary principal position, because we have a staffing change coming up at the end of this academic year, and as we. Each year, we need to go in with a thoughtful and creative mindset to manage our resources responsibly. So um. Tim, tell us about an idea of how we can make the most of. Our resources.
Absolutely, and this is a little different than I talked about with board members who we met last week, but. Having time to meet with the admin team on Friday, uh looking at an opportunity to post just for elementary principal. Uh for the three K through two, so John Klein and, and Westside, uh and um. With the idea that we know, we just approved earlier today a transfer of our special ed director into a teaching position, we'll have that opening, which we'll look at filling after we would do this. Um but needing to have a full-time person in each of those positions, um and um. Grendmeyer, uh which does a lot of executive searches, uh I guess gave us their survey that they've used in other communities. Um and so this is, while we have a posting of what we're looking for, uh generically, we'll get, we can get that out tomorrow, we've been. Then a survey, we can go out uh and just kind of get information from the community, obviously, these are non-scientific surveys, and just because you put something on there like, you know. I don't know what you want in a principal, but you know, someone who likes books or something, you have to understand that you're, you're gathering input and you're. We're gonna use this as the, the elementary team will review this, and so we'll kind of come up with uh themes that we see, um and so. All this puts together in a timeline where we would post this week, uh the elementary leadership team is gonna meet uh the first week we come back. So we can look at our survey results and get our questions and our interview team set, uh posting date ends June fifteenth.
Uh January.
January, thank you.
Important.
Posting would end mid-January, we'll uh do the vetting and interviewing candidates the last couple of weeks of January, we'd be ready to recommend a. A candidate at the February tenth board meeting.
Wow.
So. So that's, that's kind of in a process, a little bit in a nutshell, kind of the process, and want to make sure that. Uh we have pieces in there for staff input, because you know, staff are always. Uh. Eager to know who's gonna be their principal and.
Especially with all the changes that.
With all the changes coming up, um and um. And I should say, I've worked in districts where. They had somebody who might be a great principal, and then they just placed him in a building and bypassed the whole interview process. Because you know, maybe uh they have an instructional coach in a building and they really like the person, and I just think that does a huge disservice to. The principal that they placed there and then the staff, because it kind of sets you off on. Well, I could tell you Cedar Rapids did that when I left and they just placed somebody there, I thought it was super unfair to the principal they had placed there. But also the staff, because they want to have input on the candidate they brought in, and they kind of felt like, even if the person was great, there was always gonna be a little bit of. Yeah, but I didn't really have anything to say and, and, and that's just a, a tough thing to overcome, so I always. Want to include staff in the process, I think that's super important, um I should note that the one shift uh is. We've had entitled uh Rick's been the principal and Dana's been the associate principal, and then part of this will be just to have two. Separate principals and just assign them to the building, um because that's a lot the way it functions currently.
Mm hmm.
But Dana's at Kerry Lee and Rick's at John Klein, so. And I did share a little letter that I'll send out to staff with the board pending approval tonight on kind of an update on the process and where we're at. So.
I'm excited that we're in, in going, moving into this process and um. I. I'm sure that there'll be many times for us to tell Rick Bernie, thank you for all this service and, and wonderful work as we move forward. It's um, it's going to be a, a, um it's nice that we're gonna get this done and then we get to have a transition and have Rick still working while we bring in a new. Principal, so um. Yeah, I think this is a good timing for it going on. And I like having the two different positions, I think, especially, I'd like that you talk to the mid, mid team and.
Yeah.
We have. Is this where we already had done deal?
No, no, I'll take, I'll take input on that, I don't know if you want to. You could make comments in the board mini, or you can send them to me in the morning as well.
So this is the first principal admin hiring in this regard. My tenure, is it normal that we send out a survey to?
It seems to be a more common thing, you know, uh. Cindy and I talked about that as well, um getting it from Grendmeyer, they kind of do a lot of superintendent searches, but they've started to do principal searches as well. Um and you know, we did a survey with the building project, and again, these aren't. Research-based scientific surveys, these are just, anybody with a link can respond to it, but uh. What, what you'll see is you might have one or two people who make comments that maybe are outliers, but if you see. Five, ten, you start stacking up comments that are, you can kind of shuffle into a theme, then it's usually a good idea to, oh, that's. That seems to be something that's very important to people, so uh you could hire a elementary principal without doing a survey. Uh being that it's, it was a resource that we had available, I thought getting as much information as possible was, was my plan.
Yeah, I had the same question, Aaron, and.
Because part of my question.
I could argue either side.
Part of my question is, how much does the average. Person who might fill out the survey know about what's actually going on versus. Surveying staff to ask them.
Right.
How are things going within the building, what are they looking for from a principal versus?
Tim, can, can you tell us who the survey will be, like if approved?
Yeah, yeah.
Who would that go to?
Well, I, again, that, that's up for discussion, but the survey does uh. In the beginning, just ask you to identify your, your main role, so obviously. If we could send it out to everybody and then we would know, okay, this is a, this comment comes from a parent, and we could kind of put the parent comments together. Uh you're a hundred percent right, I don't know if there's any one group. That fully understands all the stuff you might do, obviously, teachers have, uh they're in the building every day and they know a lot, sort of support staff, they're probably gonna. Uh those folks are gonna have different views and different uh um perspectives than a parent group would have, so. Um I don't know if there's a magic uh formula for it, including just being an internal document.
I think that there's value. You know, survey, using surveys is a great tool to get feedback from your stakeholders, and. I would reckon, you know, my first idea is to send this by email to. Current stakeholders within like. Families that have students enrolled in school, which would allow the parents and staff of. At the primary level, but also. You know, fair, parent families or parents that have opinions that their kids are now in middle school or high school would still be able to provide feedback, I could see. Benefits to that, I don't feel comfortable about this being shared on social media far and wide, I don't think that's relevant. Um. But I think that having this tool for some back and forth engagement can, can be a positive thing and help families go heard. And teachers and other schools. And everyone.
I think as long as it's used properly, that, you know, you identify the various sub. Categories of respondents, take into account um themes that you see across each one, and. I don't know that it will be. A lightbulb moment, but certainly it provides some. Yeah, relevant information for consideration, um. Um, appropriate consideration, not give them too much value, but, uh, certainly. Um, worth pursuing.
I will say too that the school board hired Grendmeyer Services when we hired our la, our current superintendent and I was part of that process. And. I respect that organization tremendously and feel that they. Had a, a great objective process for making that hire and it helped me knowing that this survey came from them to give it credibility and leverage that, yeah, this is what's happening today.
Um, yeah, they've done it a few times. I mean, but we could tweak it like this as I'm looking as parent, we could say parent of an elementary student, parent of a, a middle school, high school student, kind of differentiate. I mean, certainly we can make it our own and, and, uh, uh, yeah, there are other suggestions, um.
I think it's nice anytime we can. Include our families in it, you know, it might not be anything we take a lot out of, but. The more we include them through all processes, I think they feel like they're more part of it. And I think. You know, it can be kind of a common theme and it's a place that we can look at and if we do a survey for this and we do this survey down the road. You can see those trends of participation and stuff also.
And, uh, yeah, I, I totally agree with that. And then just to piggyback off what you were saying. Um, about the John Klein teachers, I mean, I would like to see either a separate survey go to the John Klein teachers or an additional and add on here. Not just teacher, but a John Klein teacher, because I think their perspective is, um, particularly important. For us to, um, to, to look at.
I. Not to think too far in the future, I'd be careful just saying John Klein and not forgetting the West Side component as well. That will likely fall under the same umbrella. The only thought I have with reading through the survey is. How much are people going to respond to the needs of the new principal versus the needs of the new building? And being able to separate the two thoughts. So I'm not saying the survey isn't a good idea, but. I think there may be more feedback given towards what the new building might offer than what the next person is. Wrong said buildings offering.
You, are there some questions you think could be tweaked to move us in a direction of being more feedback on them?
And so that's where I, I have some internal questions. It's like, what opportunities for improvement exist at the elementary from your perspective? Oh, a new building would be a great opportunity for classrooms that have enough outlets and, um, so that you can actually plug all the things in or heat or air conditioning or. I think there might be some heavy overlap potentially in response that. We'll have to filter through pretty significantly to find what people are talking about in terms of the candidate versus. Versus the, the built facility that exists presently.
That's a really good point. I, I would, would add just kind of back to all, so everything, did we learn anything from the building project, which we ought to do? Community loves to participate.
Yes.
Um, and I would also say just kind of listing one of the, this information obviously would be shared with the leadership team and the interview process. But it's also a tool that can be shared with su- successful candidate as well. And I always encourage people, uh, when you interview for a job and you get a job, try to get the interview questions and look back like a year later. Cause usually the stuff that they ask in the interview is the stuff they want you to be doing. And so then that's always a good little. Like if they ask you four times about communication, like, how's your communication been or, or budget or something like that? So, so it becomes a tool then to, to help with our, our new person as well.
I do agree with Aaron. I think like that question that does not mention principal just says elementary, you know, I think that one should be taken out.
I agree and, and five questions that are free response is probably a lot. And then from filling out these surveys, um, when we, we're looking for a new middle school principal and a new superintendent. Hey, look, out of all these wonderful traits here that you would like to have, and you can only be able to pick three, it kind of drives you crazy. So I think we should either combine some of these together that are a lot like, or say six or something like.
I got an I P guy, we'll, we'll do that. So, so maybe, maybe we'll let him pick out this thing.
Sean, are you up for that?
Well, this is not an action item, correct?
Uh, I guess it's review the process, um. I, I didn't say ask for approval, but we did review the process and I think I'm going to work on, I work on the survey and, and, uh. Maybe I'll, uh, tweak it a little bit and share it out with, with folks, um. Carol's helped me in the past with surveys, so I, I know she's a little busy during the day these days, but.
There she is. I can find time.
That's why you're awesome. So Carol will help me with the survey. Let me get that tweaked up.
The only other feedback I have is anecdotal and thinking back on the last survey data, which was from the building project for the new potential at the time, elementary school. And just stating out loud for the public that every single response was read. So as part of the building committee. We went through literally all the responses. So if somebody said something negative, we read it. If they said something positive, we read it. If they said something about. Left field idea, every, everything was written. So.
And we're still using it all the days we're planning the building. There were some really good suggestions and.
So I, I do find a lot of power in survey. I just, there might be some tweaks to.
Um, moving on, the next item on our agenda is approval of rescinding of early graduation request.
So, uh, we had someone who applied for early graduation and they want to rescind their request. Uh, we have a note there. I. Brad could explain it better. Brad Hurst could explain it better, but.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'll go into the weeds too much, um. There's Iowa administrative code, uh, chapter twenty-two that outlines what's called senior year plus, which is the program that is used by many students to be able to take. College courses while they're still in high school, um, basically at no cost. Um, it's a pretty nice benefit. I wish it would have been around when I was in school, um, but. In this particular instance, the student has kind of done some research and done some things to think about what the next steps look like and would very much like to take some certain classes. Um, and as a current high school student would be able to do that without having to incur a financial cost. Not a high school student, in which case they would pay for it themselves. Um, there are many students across Iowa that do this sort of thing. Um, and so there's, you know, like I said, Iowa code that kind of backs up all this. As well as I just counted the page seventy page, Iowa Department of Education guidance, um, senior year plus, if you want some. Improve your reading, I'll do that, um, there's a lot there, um, but it is pretty well. It's definitely something that the student would be able to do and, um, we would be in a good position to support it, so.
And the fact that they want to take education classes.
Yes, I overlooked that. Yes, the, the person is wanting to become a teacher, um, and so this would allow them to pursue that as well.
So, um, I've talked to Brad a couple of times. I've had early graduation. People graduate early and then they get into February and they're like, yeah, but I'm still on the dance team, right? Or the whatever, you know? It's like, no, when you graduate early, like you're done with high school and, uh, you come to graduation kind of thing. And, but this is the first time I, and the reasons have always been a little different when people have said, well, wait a minute, you know? I didn't realize that when I graduated early and it's like, well, how do you not? Or I'm not going to graduate early because of this, but this is the first one I've had where a student wanted to take college classes and. That's about as good as, as good as one that I can think of.
I'll make a motion to approve the rescission of the early graduation request.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Uh, there's just a couple of quick notes and I've already talked about the elementary principalship, uh. We did meet with Nick, uh, the architect, uh, Friday with some of the folks in the admin or Thursday with folks in the admin team. I just kind of talked big picture stuff, uh, so Nick refers to that as schematic design, uh, the Byron folks were also here. So they're going to, the Byron is going to help us kind of provide project updates, kind of take over maybe the webpage that we had of, of the future. Um, and then as you see it in the notes, the, we start with the design, is it a design development? That's the more specific, like how's everything and you work with the user groups. So next meetings with staff, um, it says January through April and so he'll start meeting with those user groups. He's back down April, we'll see how that goes, but where we can kind of meet with folks and, and say, you know, does this make sense and, and how does this function and, um. Well, I think the one the other day was, uh, a design concept of a music room that backs up to the cafeteria and then has a sliding wall, so it becomes a stage. And that's a, that's a nice concept idea and it would really work in a district if you didn't have two auditoriums. But we've got like if, if our, we've got an auditorium, a beautiful auditorium right across the street. And then of course we've got an auditorium at Kerry Lee, um, and so we may be, that's maybe a design feature we just don't need in, in decor and especially if it's going to make that music room super loud when the lunchroom is full.
Exactly.
And so we're just kind of, uh, tweaking some of the stuff, uh, um, and, but the users will also have an opportunity to give their input. So, so we'll notice on that, uh, but look for updates and we'll promote out, uh, how the projects come along, because I know people are anxious and want updates on that. And then I just had worded out, um, we've already approved the addition of an E plus route, uh, fee as part of the consent items. But I just, I have a narrative from Chris and this is about an equity piece, um. Cause some routes take longer than others in Northeast Iowa. So they can both be the same amount of miles, but as Chris shared, the Bluffton route is about twenty-one minutes longer. So. So as we approved earlier tonight, it's, it's a dollar fifty increase per trip, which is, it's just a smaller amount impacts four drivers.
Yeah, we're looking at four drivers right now.
And so, uh, to kind of emphasize, you didn't, you like. We're trying to, that, that.
It really came, it sounded to me interrupted. It really came to light when, uh, we eliminated the relatives, some of that. Some of that vote got dumped on some drivers and it came to light that, you know, just one guy on the E route gets back at four oh five. You have another guy getting back at four thirty-five. He's like, well, you know, how is this right? Oh, that's when we started looking at it and then I kind of just. I asked for some input from some of the drivers and I mean, to me honestly, a dollar fifty for an extra half an hour. I mean, it, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it is to them. It's just that effort of I'm being compensated for that time.
So the only other thing that I did put in here is there, uh, the Water Street Lighted Parade is this Friday night. And, um, I hate to say award-winning float, but, um, there is a possibility that, uh, the bus. Transportation float will be another hit again this year and, um. Well, some of us may be a little screwy about it. There's some folks that are super enthusiastic and it's hard not to be semi-excited when. Every day people are talking about how you're going to wear a peanuts costume and play a piano and.
Yes.
Uh, they're already laughing, so.
And the lighted, the decor, this is a decor chamber hosted event. So the lighted holiday parade is on Friday at six P M, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Right.
And you'll know, just look for a large yellow school bus. And you'll see our entry.
I think you'll hear us before we get there.
Okay, and finally is our financial report.
If you take a look at the cash balances at the end of, uh, November, we've got five accounts that are up and three that are down. That's very good. What I really want to brought, bring your attention to is that cash flow. This is the first year where district is receiving the, the A E A flow through dollars. And so this is the first time, uh, that we've actually received a bill and approved a bill. So I want to just draw your attention to that A E A flow through. Last year at this time, w- we were at, uh, two hundred and twenty-six, two eighty. So I always took the dollar amount and divided by ten months. To the ten months that we received the, um, state aid. So that is not happening. The money's now being flown through as state aid. But we're paying as we're getting bills out of two eighty-eight. In December, you'll see that first bill for sixty-three thousand eight oh nine. Listed as an expense under the A E A flow through. So that kind of skews a little bit, our revenue's up and our revenue's down, so. It's just like when we, we merged with, uh, Northwind, we, we couldn't do many comparisons. So it's going to take a while to, to make comparisons again.
We're in uncharted territory, yes, financially.
And not just, well, for Brad's sake, first time looking at it, I always like to go to the cash balances in the middle. And what Kathy has done is she's got those stacked up for years. So you're, like, I like to read back the November. Uh, cash balance for November twenty-four compared with November twenty-three, November twenty-two. And as Kathy just said, it's going to be skewed a little bit, but one of the things that tells me is. You can't look straight line across, you can't, it's harder to compare August, September, October, November, because we're getting money in. You know, we have a twenty-three million dollar budget and the state doesn't give us twenty-three million dollars on July first. They, they give it as they get the receipts in. And then we just have different parts of the year where we have more, uh, where we're spending out. So. That's why you always expect probably if we ask Kathy, you can probably tell us how it's looking, but August is typically one of the lowest. Uh, cash, general fund cash balances that we have, um, and then maybe October's one of the higher ones, um, or April. So I always like to look, that's one that I look at and of course I always go down through those. The other thing you might notice is management fund is up and that's kind of an intentional part that we did this year to draw that fund up. Cause as we enter into the building project, then you'll see that number go down because that, that dramatic, that will be part of our tax rate and part of the tax rate to overall, uh. Juggle that we'll want to keep that tax rate, uh, as to what we promised the voters for the new bond, but. So we kind of put a little money down early like the Christmas club in our management fund, um, so that we can be ready for a successful bond, which we have. And then I always like to see how much save and pebble we have, because those are our big, uh, color. But I don't know, is there other highlights you, for somebody looking at it a first time, Kathy, that you think we should?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And I'm noticing on, um. In the section telling about pebble. On page five, there was a drop in November from this year compared to last.
So, on a, on a, there, oh yeah, so that's good to just. Pebble is maybe a little different. It's just kind of where we've spent the money on, on, on big projects and we, I, I, off the top of my head, we could probably look back, but. If Pebble's going down, then I would go look at save.
And that went up.
And save went up. And so usually, so I'm going to put, in my mind, I put Pebble and save together and look. Say two point nine million plus sixty-three thousand, we're at, when I combine those two, we're about three point five million. Um, last year at this time, we were, uh, looks like one point seven or one point four, so we're at thirty-one, three point one million. So we're technically up Pebble and save from this year last time.
Okay, yeah, and in Pebble, I think we purchased quite a few vehicles. I know the, the two, the vans, the, the, the truck and the other van.
Yep.
So, but, and you might see us draw those down. We have drawn those down over the last couple of years with, with purchasing of bus, uh, buildings and land, but. In the same right there, we generate, we get a lot with our save and with our pebble as well.
There's been a few things going on in the last few years. As Kathy smiles quietly.
We're, we're trying to get ready for a good, uh, movies rating.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Kathy? And do I, I can't, I'm forgetting, we don't, we approve the budget, but we don't formally approve the financial report. It's just a report out.
No.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda, so I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.